Good evening. And welcome to the January 9th East Hampton School Committee meeting. I told you that I was already, I've been led astray.
That's my fault. I told her it was so nice today. Totally my fault.
That's good. I think that's an excellent start to the meeting.
I take full responsibility for that.
Okay. Is tomorrow still your daughter's birthday?
No, Thursday.
Anyway, this meeting, all of it, laughs and all, is being recorded by the East Hampton Public Access Cable. And tonight, especially, the school committee would like to thank Tim, who is in the booth, there you are, Tim, and taking care of us. If any of you out there, loyal followers of this school committee, would like to volunteer to work for the cable access channels 5, 19, and 20, in other words, to help record, you can contact Kathy, and I'll give you the number, at 413-203-1360. Superintendent Volensby?
Yes, I have a few announcements. The next school committee meetings are January 22nd, February 12th, March 12th, and 26th, 2013. There is no school on Monday, January 21st, due to Martin Luther King holiday. There's no school on Monday, January 28th, due to Teacher Professional Development Day and semester change. There's a half-day of school on Tuesday, February 5th, due to Teacher Professional Development Day. And there is no school February 18th to 22nd, due to President's Day and winter break.
Phone's ringing. Phone's ringing. Phone's ringing.
Hey Bonnie, phone's ringing.
Is that it?
That's it.
And thank you. Well, I think that some of you probably do not recognize me in this particular position in the center of the school committee, because this is my first evening as chairperson of the committee. So, the one, the person that you are most used to seeing, the person that you are familiar with, for those of you who are loyal followers, is Mr. Peter Gunn. So, I'm wondering, Mr. Gunn-
He moved right to the right.
Yes, he's moved to the right. I'm wondering if I might ask you to stand up.
Oh, gosh.
We, the school committee, Mr. Gunn, Peter, wants to thank you for your leadership as chairperson of this committee from, what years have I got here? From, geez, January of 2010 until December of 2012. So, Peter, during that time, you have led us faithfully, and you have worked with us in a collaborative manner. So, we thank you for that. And to show our appreciation, books will be purchased in your honor and given to the East Hampton High School Library.
Fantastic.
Those books will be selected by the librarian.
Awesome.
And if I might read this certificate that we would like to present to you. It's a certificate of appreciation. This certificate is awarded to Peter T. Gunn in recognition of valuable contributions as school committee chairperson of the East Hampton Public Schools, January 4th, 2010 to December 31st, 2012. Thank you.
Thank you.
Even though you're a couple of people away, I can still call on you for help.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
At this time, LaDonna, do we have any correspondence?
No, we do not.
All right. And I did not see any gifts in our packets today, so I take it that we don't have any gifts to accept. At this time in our program, we invite anyone, the masses that are out there today, would like to speak on a topic that is not on the agenda. In other words, it's open public speak. So, if there's a topic out there that you would like to speak about, that you had, we had not planned on, now is your opportunity. They're fighting their way to the podium. Okay, thank you. All right, subcommittee reports. Finance, where are you?
We are right here.
Right here.
So, we did have a meeting last week, and the minutes are coming very shortly. And I want to update you on this meeting that we had, because we had some very important discussions. Deb and I were there. Bonnie had another issue, so she was not at this meeting. And Nancy and Andy were with us. And to start with, Nancy informed us that a couple of the city councilors had come to visit her a short while back, and one of them, Councilor Winnie and Councilor Hagan. And Councilor Winnie was concerned about the tone of the override message that had gotten out. And along with that, they also had some concerns about a couple items within the school budget, such as the school choice funds and the cafeteria funds. And those were actually responded to by Andy. He has responded to both of them. And Nancy will just follow up to make sure that there's no other questions that they have regarding that. We spoke about the budget, the 2013-2014 budget. We spoke about the school budget and how it relates to the entire district budget. We had some lengthy conversations about that. Just, you know, we have to figure out how we can get our fair share of the city funds. So, we will be talking more about that. Another thing that Nancy has talked to us about, and we want to share with the committee, is that she's going to invite the school committee members to tour the schools with her. She's going to create some small groups and take us around and show us what the schools look like now, as in with the teachers and the children, and talk to us about what will happen with the drastic budget cuts. And we also would like to invite the city councilors to go with us as well. Along with the city councilors, Andy and Nancy had suggested, and the finance committee agreed, we would like to ask the city councilors to send two representatives to our work sessions, our budget work sessions. We thought this might help them understand what we are going through.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah, it is. So, that's another thing that we're going to have to be scheduling very soon, our budget work sessions. At this point, Nancy is still working with her admin team, unfortunately, working on the cuts and making up those lists. But we're going to need to be meeting and going over that with them. That's all I have. Debbie, is there anything you want to add?
I just thought I'd add that Nancy and I were talking yesterday about a lot of this situation. And I was suggesting that perhaps we should ask to be invited to the, ask to be on the agenda of the city council, a meeting in February, and perhaps provide at that time an overview of, to help understanding, help understanding of our budget process and the system and our situation, and perhaps provide a very, very basic, clear, concise, introductory kind of presentation that would educate everybody there about what our budgeting world is like. And provide that sort of basic education, which might help then, and make representatives that might attend our subcommittee meetings in the future, our work sessions in the future, better prepared and better able to understand exactly what it is we're talking about as things progress. So, we had talked about the possibility of doing that.
I think the goal is to be as transparent as possible in our budget building process, and to be as inclusive as possible. And so, we were brainstorming ideas about how we might do that. And at our finance committee meeting, and then Deb asked to meet with me this week and shared some of her ideas about it. So, just another effort to be as inclusive and as transparent as possible in our budget building process.
Go ahead.
I'm just curious about the visit from Councilors Hagan and Winnie, and what the point of information of their visits seemed to be.
I think, as Lori mentioned, they were concerned about a message that was not positive getting out about our schools and the, you know, what we were facing with a budget gap. And I explained to them that, you know, we were, we had a very good conversation, by the way. I explained that we were aware of that, and that it was a fine balance between being factual about the situation we find ourselves in, while still promoting a very positive viewpoint of our district. And that we were aware that we needed to continue, since the override was not passed, to promote what's positive about the East Hampton Public Schools, and that we will still make every effort, regardless of what funds we have or funding gap we have, to provide the very best education for every student here in East Hampton. So, that was really the purpose, concern about a message getting out that the East Hampton schools were not going to be able to continue to provide the same kind of quality of education.
Did those, did those councilors offer a willingness to publicly express their desire to support the budgetary needs of the school?
Well, we just pretty much talked about the issues. We just identified the issues and talked about the issues. And there were some questions about two line items in the budget, which Andy was able to clear up easily. They were about choice amounts that were currently still in the budget, but they aren't, the, this teacher salaries aren't subtracted from those amounts until the end of the school year. And the other one was about reimbursements for food service, because it looked like we had a bigger deficit than we actually have, because the reimbursements hadn't come in yet. A mistake.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, that we, that they will be, they will be receptive to going on the tour of the schools?
I'm hoping so. I think-
Are you hoping? Yeah, we don't know. We didn't speak to them. Okay. All right, all right. But at least maybe that's the next step. Yes. All right. Any other questions for finance? Thanks. Policy?
We have not met, but we do need to meet this month. And before we leave tonight, right after the meeting, we, the subcommittee needs to get together to schedule a meeting for January.
For January. All right.
Nancy, if I can just add, I believe that there's a need for a policy in order to be able to finally meet the CHIPS requirements of the high school. So, Nancy, it would be useful, I think, if you talked to Pete.
Okay.
It's come up a couple of times at job meetings, and Ken has simply said that it'll be coming from the school department. But I know that the school committee's not looking at it, so I'm certain that there's a slight disconnect.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything about this.
So, it, I think it's something that we probably already heard of. Early on during the process, the school committee was presented with information about CHIPS and the idea about being green and green practices, that sort of thing. And I think we probably voted something about supporting a policy of some sort, but never created the policy. And so, there's a need for a copy of the school committee or school department policy.
Okay.
So, we probably ought to get that going, since we'll need, we'll eventually need to have that published.
We will put that on our January agenda then.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Is there a update from CES?
No, I will have one tomorrow. I have a meeting tomorrow night.
Okay. All right. And I think that we have Samantha up here with us tonight, and Bailey is out there in the, in the audience. But Samantha, can you tell us what's happening in the school world?
Okay, well, everyone's coming back from their first full week back from break, so we're all getting back into the swing of things. Student council is working on tackling the school dress code and making a couple reforms to that. The cheerleaders are holding a youth clinic for the community and for students in grades two through eight from other communities surrounding our area as well. So, everybody's welcome, grades two through eight, on the 19th, from nine to two. It's $25, but that includes a lunch and an awesome t-shirt and a performance at one of our basketball games. It's going to be really exciting. Anybody wants to pre-register, they can call 413-386-7243.
Now, what was the age limits on this?
Second grade to eighth grade.
Okay, I think I'm out. Okay.
Oh, sorry. You're lucky we're on.
All right, all right.
The AP US History class is preparing for their We the People competition on January 26th. And I believe they're doing a very diligent and excellent job, Bailey. Yes, they are, all right. The drama club's prepping for their musical, How to Succeed in Business Without Really Trying, which is-
Oh, good.
-February 8th to the 10th. And Leo Fish, Connor Gibbs, and Brandon Page, who all qualified for districts, are having their performance this Saturday. So, that's really exciting.
Yeah.
Wonderful. That's what's going on in the high school.
Good stuff. I'm not even going to ask this question, but I did have it in my head. What changes are they perhaps thinking to make in the dress code? I'll just float that out in my head, do you?
Okay.
And see if it comes up next time.
Okay.
All right.
Nancy, I just wanted to, if we could, in relation to things that are going on, I know this happened some time ago, but this past Saturday evening, I got to watch the East Hampton High School. Is it called the academic team? Is it Schools Match Wits?
Yeah, Schools Match Wits team.
The Schools Match Wits team, which includes our own Sam Brand, and then Chloe Benson-Crab, Brandon Page, Ryan Rodriguez, and William Torrey. And I thought they did a terrific job and, you know, displayed curiosity, intelligence, energy, responsiveness. It was a lot of fun to see you perform publicly, and clearly, it showed a lot of effort. I know it's got to be pretty nerve-wracking to be there, knowing you're being televised, knowing that, you know, every answer counts. I remember saying that you made a couple of great answers.
Thank you.
You know, sort of at the last second, when it seemed like everybody was at a loss, and then, you know, and other folks did too, as well. So, both to you and to your classmates, congratulations.
Thank you very much. And if anybody wants to check it out, go to wgbY.org.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Peter. Is there any other reports that need to come forward at this time?
I just want to add one.
Yes.
One announcement. I don't know if we mentioned this at our last December meeting, the Elf Ball, March 2nd, in case anybody wants to mark their calendar.
Okay.
So, just keep that in mind.
All right. Superintendent Volensby, I think it's your turn.
Okay. So, we have two reports tonight. The first is an update on the USDA requirements for school lunch, and an update on what our food service director, Andrew Chartwell's food service director, and ours. Andrew's Stratton are, is going to give us, and what he's been doing in the district. So, Andrew, I'll call you up.
Okay.
Yeah, up at the podium, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just sort of update as far as the USDA. The last time I met with you, and I think it was September, there were a lot of USDA regulation changes that affected the program. We implemented them fairly well. We're in the process of securing six cents per meal increase in reimbursement with the USDA, based on following their guidelines. There was some pushback, some of the main changes. Portions of fruits and vegetables increased, but there were new maximums on both protein and grains. So, within, the main pushback, primarily at the high school, was noticing some of the breads were smaller in order to offer sandwiches every day. With the new requirements and having a maximum, we had to shrink the size of the rolls a little. The hamburger patties, the meats in the sandwiches or wraps remain the same, but we used to do a 10-inch tortilla. We had to shrink it to an 8-inch tortilla, things like that. Students noticed. So, we tried to, in September, we had a letter home, a letter on our web, the school district website, and tried to reach out, let students know why the changes were coming around, especially when we increased the meal price. A lot of the pushback was, you know, increasing the meal price and things shrink. There wasn't as much pushback as some parts of the country, some school districts, students made videos and complained about some of the regulation changes. It wasn't too, too bad. Tried to do some outreach and explain why. And we actually, at the high school, tried to supplement or try to get the students to take more fruits and vegetables to compensate for the smaller rolls with the maximum amount of... But now, things have changed. There's been a new USDA memo or change in the regulations. They call it flexibility in the meat, meat alternate and grain maximums for this school year only. So, for the rest of the school year, we can go back to the bigger buns and the larger tortillas. We started to introduce some of those back. Some of the things we might not change, based on, we also have a maximum this year on calories that we offer within the week for our menus. Used to be, was just minimums that we had to reach to make sure we were providing the right amount of nutrients and proteins, but now there's a maximum on the calories based on age groups in the school district. So, some of the items, we used to have a larger biscuit. We'll probably still stay with a smaller one, because the fat content and the calories in that do sway the overall calories for the week. But we've reintroduced some of the items that we had shrunk, and so, I'm hoping that the changes will sort of, or the grumblings will be reduced somewhat. And I have outreach during September and October with the high school, with the high school council, and then the high school student council. And within that, there were some discrepancies or things with, but we, I think we've ironed it out, as far as what we're offering. I'm meeting with Dr. Perone on Thursday to go over items coming back and some of the changes that we'll make, and we'll pass those on to the student council. I also met last week with the Whitebrook Student Council. Some of the changes we had made there didn't seem as drastic to them, and it was more of a give and take. New student senate members were, we spoke about these changes. The reason why the school department and Chartwell's has to do certain things with it, and it was a good give and take. Got a lot of good ideas from the students that will put into the menus and change some things, some good ideas. And there also came away, I think, with a better understanding on what's going on. And now that continued voice from the student senate will hopefully have students purchasing lunch more often, when they know they have a voice and can understand what some of the changes were. That's more or less that in a nutshell. We will, during the spring, focus on National Nutrition Month and promoting fruits and vegetables, using local ingredients, things like that. Our campaign's not set yet, but I'll get information out. And during your tours of the schools, hopefully, you'll see the cafeteria, and by the time you come around, hopefully, we'll have the ovens that we are in the process of purchasing for the elementary schools to have fresher items baked right at the schools. Hopefully, those will be up and running when you come by. But if there's any questions or comments.
Okay, Mayor?
Yeah, just curious, did you do anything in advance of the change in the menu, the reduction in the greens? Did you do any marketing ahead of time?
We did some marketing. We actually had some posters with what makes a reimbursable lunch. Some of that, people don't notice. We did send things home in letters in August and September and put things on a website. So, the message was out there. I was even in the cafeteria and with both students and faculty, trying to let them know the reasoning behind those things. You know, some listened, some were, you know, something that, another change that they didn't have any control of, which can be frustrating for anybody. But we've gotten to a good place, especially offering more of the fruits and vegetables and the salads to compensate for the smaller rolls. And now, we're shifting back, back and forth, unfortunately, with the USDA.
While we have you here, I've had, I'm a NutriKids user, and I noticed that was changing just by going out to the, with the school website. Can you talk a little about what's going on with that?
Yes. NutriKids is the point-of-sale computer system that the school district owns and we use for the cafeteria, not only for online prepayments, but in the cafeteria. The interactions in our accounting actually is based on the system. NutriKids was purchased by a company called Heartland. Let me make sure I have the right name. Heartland Payment Systems. And they took over NutriKids. NutriKids, for the most part, their system will be the same. But as opposed to using PayPal, they switched it to MySchoolBucks, which is fairly, fairly similar. We tried to send out notice to parents. There's information on the website, and it sort of walks you through switching over. Before we did it here in East Hampton, I'm also running Granby, we had made the same transition. There were a couple bumps, mostly in the back of the house with the accounting, but parents didn't notice much of a change. Student information stays the same, it's just the way you prepay.
Got it. But so, the money carried over from NutriKids?
Yes.
So, I don't need to go out there at the moment?
Nope. The money actually is in the school department account, and everything remains the same. Nothing will be, no, nothing's been, and so far, there haven't been any complaints either in Granby or East Hampton. So, it seems to be working.
Good. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Yes.
Yeah, just clarifying, we're allowed to go up and get more fruits and vegetables?
We're trying to do it so that when you come through the line and you purchase your lunch, if you want to take, you know, two more fruits or two extra vegetables, when you're going through the line, we're trying not to have too many people come back up.
Okay.
It's not, you know, say, all you can eat, but we are trying to make a good value. And sometimes, we don't know who's had a lunch or not. If you forgot an apple, our staff will let you get another portion.
All right. I just know, like, from my personal experience with other students, they've come up and told us, because I'm on student council, about, that they've been, like, turned away, or they've been told, oh, you can't take an extra apple, you can only have one banana, or something like that.
And that's sort of what happened in the first part of September, October, and we've tried to, I've tried to work with our staff to make sure they understand the changes.
Yeah.
We had to do training with our staff, but also to make sure sanitary-wise, students coming up with, you know, another bowl or tray and, you know, piling high, we're trying to keep it fairly, you know, within reason.
Right, of course. Okay, thank you.
And I'm hoping to meet with the student council again in the near future, just to clarify that. And since we're going to, back to the portion sizes from last year on the breads and rolls, that, you know, two extra, be more specific with what the portions, as far as what students can take.
Great, we'd love to have you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I'm just thinking back to the discussion earlier about the finance subcommittee, and when someone hears about purchasing the new ovens, that makes sense in terms of the mission they're trying to accomplish, but in light of the new high school- But in light of the new high school building process, can... And I don't know who can answer this for the public, but there are, right, there are already existing kitchen materials in the old high school. The new high school's being equipped with new materials, correct?
No.
No, we're just moving that over.
Depends on what you call materials.
Right. I guess I'm just interested in clarification for the public's interest.
The facility will have... The new high school has ovens. Matter of fact, I just posted a picture of a six-burner gas range and a pair of baking ovens on my Facebook page from the high school today. But so the kitchen will be equipped with the stuff that's built into a kitchen.
Right.
The silverware, a lot of the materials you use to serve every day, pots and pans, that sort of stuff's got to come over.
Right.
So that's what the school department's doing now, is that we know what we've purchased.
Right.
We know what we have, and they're identifying what we have that has to move to the new building. What we have... And then after that, it's what we have that is still serviceable, that maybe another school could use. After that, it's what of that group of materials that's still left can the city use? And then after that, it's whether any of it needs to get surplused or not.
Right.
And so that's a whole process that's going to take some time, but it's going to have to pick up a little bit of pace because it's got to be... We have to know what we're doing in April. April's the move date. There's a week that we're going to be able to bring professionals in to move stuff. There's going to be time required to identify and package things, whether we hire someone to package it or whether the staff package it. You know, those are decisions that'll have to be made as we move forward. When we moved into this building in 2003, I don't know what the school department did. The city hired a company who gave us totes. And we filled the totes. And the totes had an ID tag on them that told it which room to come to here. And so staff filled the totes with all their belongings and left them in the room that they were working in. And someone brought them here and dropped them in the room they were going to be working in. I presume that that's likely what's going to happen in the school department, but that hasn't been done yet. So in the kitchen, to go back to your question, the stuff that you would normally see built into a kitchen is there. I believe that some of the warming lamps that you have are going to be moved over. We actually put in, which wasn't originally in the plan because we weren't sure, I think, where it was going to go. We had to put in power so these warming lamps were in the right place.
I just think that... I mean, thank you for those answers. I think it's important in light of questions about the way the school committee and the way the whole high school building project has gone in terms of the expenditure of resources for people in the city to understand that as much as is possible to... And again, I go back to referencing the comment about buying new ovens for the elementary school. Someone I'm sure is saying, why not take the ovens out of the high school and move them in? And I think your answer addresses that in a way that helps people understand what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, and I think Andrew could also speak to the ovens. We didn't actually buy them. Did I talk about that, Andrew?
That's what I'm getting... Yeah, thank you.
Within our contract for the next three years, we've worked in $43,000 in investment into the program from the funds, the school lunch funds. And so part of the plan was to upgrade the elementary schools, which do not have ovens, with a new type of oven. And actually, the high school ovens, I believe, are at least 20 years old or so and wouldn't do their same job. These ovens that we're going to be bringing in are a stand-up oven that's a oven and a warmer. And it actually is quilted to touch for the most part, doesn't need a hood fan or ventilation, which the elementary schools do not have.
Doesn't have as part of its structure, right.
So and even the refrigeration, there's very little refrigeration in both elementary schools. So we're also bringing in two freezers. The freezers that are at the high school currently are on their last legs, and we've been biding our time, hoping that we get into the new school before they're not working anymore.
That's exactly what I...
I just think that people appreciate knowing what you've just described, what the mayor described, and that the basic approach has been to be really responsible with the resources that we have. And so the city, you know, people in the city understand that that's not... There's not a new luxury item being put into the elementary school kitchens that we could have, you know, gotten somewhere else by moving something around for all the reasons you just described. So thank you.
And just to clarify again, it was part of the contract that... With Chartwell's.
Thank you.
Very nice part of it. Thank you. Any other questions for Andrew? Okay, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew.
Appreciate it. And now we have Thomas Hogan and Amy Goyette. Are you going to help out with...
I'm mostly going to do the speaking.
So these Friends of Football have come to give you a presentation and to ask a request.
Sure. Is it best if I stand over there or wherever you like?
I think... Mike, where do you think he should stand with a tripod?
I don't think it'll matter. There's a camera right there, so I think anywhere you put it, we can see if they can see it.
Is this all right?
Yep.
Only be heard on camera.
There's a receiver.
Oh, maybe...
We just got the thumbs up from...
Yeah, if you want to be heard, you're going to have to be at the podium.
You know, he's up... Really, the room picks up. The room picks up sound very loud. I'm sorry to watch you around here. You're probably fine.
We're just trying to have you stretch your leg.
Actually, Thomas, you should just walk around.
All right. Just for the sake of disclosure, that device right up in the ceiling between the light that's on and the light that's off will pick up your voice.
Okay. Great. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Okay.
And Tom, I'm going to let you introduce yourself.
Sure, appreciate it. Name's Tom Hogan. I'm a civil engineer with Doucette and Associates in Northampton, Mass. Also volunteer with the East Hampton Friends of Football Association, been a coach for the last couple of years. Here with Amy Goyette. Amy is the president of the organization. East Hampton Friends of Football Association is the youth football organization in the town of Southampton. I thought it'd be best if Amy could give a brief history of the organization. Is that all right?
Sure. East Hampton Friends of Football, I don't know exactly, I want to say 13 or 14 years ago, was formed. And they originally started with just the little kids, Pee-wee suburban kids. And then as those kids grew, the organization grew and it became the organization that funded basically the JV team. As the JV team grew and it became a senior varsity team, they also took on the majority of the funding until very recently, East Hampton High School athletic program has taken on most of the funding. But we still act as the booster club for the high school. We fund things such as the charter buses to get the kids to and from away games. Football players have a lot of equipment. It would be unsafe to have them travel on school buses with all their equipment. So we fund the difference between the school buses and the charter buses. We help pay to maintain the fields. We run the concession stand for which all of the funds go to the EFA. And we help purchase equipment that's needed that the school doesn't have funding for. We buy their jerseys, their practice jerseys. If they need extra game jerseys and they don't have the funds for that, we fund that. So we're an integral part of the workings of the high school football team. So that's who we are.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
You're welcome.
During my time with the program, some of the folks and the fantastic volunteers I've had the pleasure to work with in that time, although very happy and always satisfied with the experience that we had in the football amenities at Whitebrook Middle School, they've expressed and have had discussions about ways that they could possibly enhance the facility or improve certain aspects of it. Some of those discussions were occurring this past year. They asked my opinion. One of the specialties that my firm has is working on recreation fields and ball fields. So I offered to work with them. And over the past couple of months, we've developed this kind of discussion, ongoing kind of conceptual discussion about some of the things that we could possibly do to enhance the existing accessibility of the field, the amenities that may be at the field, the soil conditions, the drainage, the utilities. So in doing so, we developed a concept. And that's what this is. This is a concept. It's an idea that some folks have been talking about. And we wanted to make you aware of it in hopes that we could get your support to continue our discussions about the project. I feel like we're at a point with the project where we've, in essence, assessed... Well, let me back up a little bit just for orientation purposes. Here we have the Whitebrook Middle School with the driveway, the circle of the driveway and the existing football field north is up. What the current concept is, is looking at the upper field just to the west of the existing field in the same orientation. Could a field possibly fit on the upper field? That's where we have a lot of our... The Pee-wee's practice up on top of the field, the cars are parked at the Tulliver Slope. So based on, you know, our initial look of that, it looks like geometrically it could fit. We've visited the site for this purpose many times, as well as I, of course, coach there four nights a week during the season. So we feel like we have a pretty good... We have a pretty good feeling that this would fit in this area.
Tom, you might want to... Maybe we're going to do this anyway, but just back up and talk a little bit about why you felt that there was a need to move the field.
Right, I was going to say the same thing.
Sure.
Having had a player on the...
On the swamp.
The mud pit.
You know, when we started looking at the project, the logical thing that I think was thought is how do we enhance the existing facility that we have? I think if you've been to a game after, you know, there's been a lot of rain, you'll know that it's pretty poorly drained and it takes a long time for the soils to drain. Accessibility, especially when you're trying to access the track to get to a good spot to watch it, it's very tough to get to and keep your shoes dry, there's no doubt about it. And that kind of adds adversely as you play more on the field and it doesn't have a chance to recover. It gets muddier and ripped up more, it doesn't have a chance to heal itself and get established. So...
And I'm just going to add too, not just the playing field, but where our families sit is a big puddle of water, so...
There's chronically standing water. And with the mosquito issue that we had this year, it was very detrimental. Our suburban kids actually almost... Their practice time was cut probably in half by the fact that it was just so damp down there.
And I also want to add that in discussions with our athletic director, Jeff Seelander, he's been concerned about the safety for our student athletes playing on that field with the many uneven surfaces, I believe, and the wetness and so forth. So he's had many discussions with me about that.
And there's also no lights.
No.
And the way the soil is, there's so much clay, we would have to dig down so far to put lights on any kind of solid ground that it would just be cost prohibitive.
Those are some of the kind of upfront initial obstacles that we saw. To say that we've gone through an exhaustive evaluation of what it would take to bring this up to kind of a current standard would not be accurate. But, you know, we're looking at options, and this is one option that we'd like to explore a little bit farther. So one of the things that we'd like to do is have your support in advancing our evaluation of the property a little bit farther. We'll have to do some data gathering that would be very non-intrusive, a little bit of survey, make sure the grades, a little bit of soil. I'd like to look at some of the subsurface soil conditions so that we have an initial feeling, what do we have? You know, we know that... We know what the soil's like here and have an idea that this probably isn't an optimal condition, but let's start and learn about it. If we have some well and resources, we'll identify those and get them on a map so the EFA can continue with its studying and evaluation of some options, really to create a nice facility here. And I think ultimately, we would like to... Once we learn a little bit more about what the preferred options would likely be, we'd like to continue our discussion with you and, you know, hopefully continue to have your support with the project.
And I want to add here as well that I did have a discussion with Principal Rabello from Whitebrook Middle School to get her feelings about whether she supported this project as a possibility. And she said that she was fully in support of it as well, so...
I just wanted to add too that this is a growing program. I've had three of my kids in the program over the duration of, I think, seven or eight years. And they learned a lot. We have other sports programs growing in the community. And just to be able to support this program and its success like we've been able to do the others, this booster club is really great. They do really do have a lot of great volunteers. They work hard, the families come together from both communities, Southampton and East Hampton. And I know when we were involved, it was just a really great organization. And again, the program is growing. So to be able to continue to support the kids, I think the team this year at the high school was the biggest they've had ever.
Yeah.
The freshman team, I think especially, was a very big one. So we want to be able to support them going forward.
Yes?
Exactly what kind of support do you wish us to give you tonight?
I think we'd like... I'm not sure exactly what form of permission that we need to do our work on this property and whatever form that we need to ask for it. We'd like to make that request. If you let me know, I'll be happy to do it. Tell you exactly what I'd like to do now is I have proposals in the EFA as approved funding to do some limited topographic land survey, to do some limited weapons delineation if required. And I suspect that maybe it will be, you know, around the perimeter. That means hanging flags by a local consultant that'll be picked up by the surveyors. The other thing that Indiana will be coordinating is I'd like to have a small excavator go out there for half of a day or maybe six hours. And a local agronomist, soil scientist will take some samples and try and educate us about what kind of soils that we have. Minimally intrusive, we don't need anything from you and, you know, happy to, you know, make you aware of exactly who's going to be there and when. So I feel like that's a good starting point for us.
Okay.
Having been involved in developing the field that is there now and putting in the goalposts, it certainly is time for it to be moved. And it seems the old soccer fields are probably a good idea. So I think what we need tonight is a motion, and I'll make it, that the school committee authorize the Southampton Friends of Football, subject to the provision of insurance certificates, access to the school property that was formerly the soccer fields near Whitebrook for exploration of feasibility of redeveloping a football field at that location.
All right. Second?
Just for clarification, the certificate of insurance, I think, naming the city as additional insured is really going to be necessary for anybody who's professionally on the land. You know, if members of the group are there, whatever. But if someone's there with an excavator, someone's doing soil sampling, someone's doing any kind of testing, it'll all just get us insurance to get to the superintendent's office, naming the city. And that's a no-cost deal to whoever it is, but it does protect us in case something happens. We're not the first line of defense. The individual, the professional who might be there with an excavator or the scientist has insurance, that'll be the first cover. And that's just to protect it. It doesn't mean anything negative about it.
That's not unusual in some of these... Good question.
Any other questions or discussion? Yes, Mayor?
Just from a student's perspective, this sounds really exciting. I know everyone gets really excited about like the Williston games with the lights and the bigger seating and concession stands and everything. So it's just going to be really exciting to be able to come home and see all of this.
Unfortunately, Williston has... If you notice, this year we had no games at Williston. They no longer... Well, this year at least, they didn't allow us to use the field because it interferes with their Friday night study hall. Which, you know, if you're paying that kind of money, I can completely understand their point of view. So we are very excited. I have a freshman, and I'm hoping by the time he's a senior, I'll, you know, be able to see him play another night. We're very excited about it.
I'm a cheerleader, so to be on the sidelines of every game at that football field this year, it was rough. But we're there, and to see all the fans coming out so dedicated is just so great. So hopefully we can get even more of a fan base on this new... So, hopefully we can get even more of a fan base on this new one.
Great.
We got some great comments too about trying to arrange certain things in a subtle manner that really foster home team kind of spirit and support. And so, that's, we want to keep that kind of momentum going, so.
And I certainly am in support of this as well. I've spoken to both Tom and Amy before this presentation. I wanted them to come here and, and explain it to you.
One thing, if I just could kind of expand on what we, what kind of support we would be looking for, and, you know, I may be jumping the gun, but the EFFA would be looking for some sort of a long-term lease at a dollar or some amount so that the, we can be guaranteed that our suburban kids would have access to this. So, that may, again, we may be jumping the gun, but that is something that we would be looking for from you, is it guaranteed?
So, that'll be a little bit further down the road.
Correct. But you asked, so.
All right. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Gunn?
Mike, you may know, I don't know anything about the land, except that I know on the other side of the woods, the difficulties that we've had.
Right.
And over the course of the 25 years plus that I've been coaching on the Williston fields, the efforts that have been made to address the issues that you're concerned about, I, I understand them exactly. I coached on a softball diamond that was perpetually wet. If there was a cloud, it seemed to draw the water up out of the soil. And we've learned a lot about clay and about laying plates. And I'm just wondering if it might be worth, if you haven't already, contacting the director of the plant at Williston to see if there's any information that's relevant. It may be a completely different parcel with no common features, but given that they're literally a couple hundred yards apart, am I getting that right, wouldn't you say? And that there's been some relatively recent work done by Williston towards that end, there might be some information that would help, you know.
No, I think it's great, yeah, I appreciate it.
This particular site is, at least in relationship to the other field at, at Whitebrook, is much higher. It's about 40 feet higher.
Right.
It really has been a relatively useful field for soccer over the years and not a lot of complaints about, about water. So, I think that they'll discover better drainage characteristics in that land than where they are now. Certainly it's worth talking.
And that's been my substance grants on that.
I do want to, I do want to just remind everyone that we shoot the Fourth of July fireworks from that field. And so, whatever you end up doing, you're going to have to fit with that as well.
Well, they'll have to find another spot.
All right. There is a motion that has been seconded that the school committee authorized the Friends of Football to continue their investigation of the football field and the possibilities of a new area. All those in favor of this motion?
Aye.
All those opposed? Good. Look forward to hearing more about it.
Can we just quickly go through the little yellow features that we're thinking of, just off the field?
Sure, be happy to. Before I do, I want you to know these concepts. And this, this isn't intended to represent what Mike actually builds. This is just the emphasis. You know, the, the labels kind of represent the, the elements that we currently have in mind for the overall project. You know, we'd like to make sure that it's integrated with whatever improvement may be proposed at this northern parking lot area here. We know it's a little broken up and it's not in great shape. I hear there may be plans for improvement, maybe not.
Well, yeah, the superintendents are where we're attempting to get state school building assistance for repairs at Whitebrook. It hasn't been forthcoming yet and we don't know when it will be.
If we could continue to communicate if something here happens and we can ultimately plug in whatever you do, you know.
I will be here for it, so definitely keep communicating.
Fair enough.
And we do, last year we actually did a, a good patching job on part of that parking lot. And even if we don't get pulled into the MSBA project immediately, we'll continue to do that. So, we'll stay in, in contact with you on any improvements.
We kind of envisioned, you know, we're running the, the field in what some would consider the preferred orientation. We have the, which is east-west with the home stands on the south side facing the northern direction, visitor stands on the north side. This call-out is for a ticket booth or possibly the, the programs before a game. As we walk up here, we, we show concessions, a restroom and a field house. And the idea is maybe that's somewhere that the home team can go at before the game, be introduced. The home crowd, which would be near the, on the home bleacher side, could maybe create a human tunnel for the players to run out at concessions and kind of get them going. We show a little playground area over here, you know, maybe somewhere before or halftime. Parents with young kids can have a place that's kind of a little bit remote from heavy foot traffic, but close enough to the action that you can occupy. I have four boys, so we have to think about those things. Then we have a foot path, gravel access path. We do show lights, you know, and we're hoping that that becomes part of it. We, we show a visitor's field house for the opposing team and then the parking lot improvements. And we haven't gone, gone crazy with what we're calling out, where we think it's somewhat subject to change, though we, some other committee kind of style of decisions that'll drive those elements. But, you know, we think for starters, it's something that it's worth advancing at this point.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Any other questions? Thank you.
So, you envision, Nancy, that the, in the long run, that this might be something that would be on school property?
Yes.
But would be funded outside of public taxpayer funding with a lease that allows the organization to continue to use.
That's the present proposal, yes.
Yes. We would, that's our hope is to raise the funds completely without asking you guys for anything, to get your hands full with that.
And we thank you so much for everything.
So, you guys are the ones who'll be able to do it, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, and as, as a side note on the scheduling issue, and there may be more, I'm sure there's more to it than I know, the study hall issue on Fridays is an alternate Friday, so it may have been a few-year combination of home and away contests that, that influenced that. Because there were, I believe, some soccer games played at Williston this fall under the lights by City Hampton.
Have I? Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you.
You're the best voice, Thomas. Doesn't he?
He's got a good, good presentation voice.
I know. I'd like to hear him coach football. He must have a football coach voice.
I was just going to say that.
He is a very, oh, football coach.
There's such a thing?
Well, that's why I was wondering. All right. Minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of the December 11, 2012 meeting of the school committee?
Second. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. Oh, sustained, sorry. How about warrants?
Yes, we do. One, two, payroll. Just in time on the water fountain. Move to approve the school payroll dated December 27, 2012 in the amount of $459,149.96.
Second. All those in favor of supporting, approving the school payroll dated 12/27/2012 in the amount of $459,149.96?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. All those opposed? The payroll is approved.
Move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated December 20, 2012 in the amount of $494,664.49.
Second. Accounts payable, move to approve the accounts payable authorization in, on December 20, 2012 in the amount of $4,094.664.49. That one didn't come out quite right. Well, I did well on the first one.
Can you repeat that amount, please?
The exact amount. Four, nine, four, comma, six, six, four, forty-nine cents. I have a little disability with reading numbers, but we're working on me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Payroll is accepted.
Move to approve the school payroll dated January 10, 2013 in the amount of $449,174.4.
Second. Oh, God, I'm sweating. Move to approve the school payroll dated January 10, 2013 in the amount of $4,049.104. Oh, read it for me, dear. Is there one more?
That's it.
Oh, good. All those in favor of accepting the payroll?
Aye.
For January 10? Any opposed? Good.
That's it.
All right.
Do you want to join the finance committee?
We will need signatures.
And we also need signatures. This is specifically to the members, to sign this to show you did not spend money on your Oh, we also have a new position request, correct?
That's right. So, we're requesting a new position, which is speech-language therapy assistant in place of a speech-language pathologist. So, the special ed director's intent with this is if, we've had difficulty finding a, a speech-language pathologist to take the position that's currently open. And in some districts, a speech-language therapy assistant is used and that person is supervised by a speech-language pathologist. And so, we would like to have the option of being able to hire either.
The only comment I had on that, and I'm sure the answer is a good one, is that in the IEPs, as long as the services that are supposed to be provided for are provided for properly under that supervision.
Exactly.
Okay, exactly.
So, I want to, excuse me, we do have very specific credentials for this position as well, so.
So, I believe we need a motion to accept this position change.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the new position requested, in other words, a speech-language therapy assistant in place of the speech-language pathologist. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The new position has been authorized. At this point, we will move to executive session to discuss contract negotiations, but we will not be coming back to open session. We will be adjourning the evening at the end of the executive session.
So, we don't need to adjourn this one?
No, we don't need to adjourn this.